So it's my privilege to present the state of the city for this year to the council. I'd like to acknowledge the department heads. Some of you may recall when I ran for mayor in 2009, one of the things I talked about was maintaining the team and how everybody worked together. And council has become part of that as well, us all working collaboratively. And that's part of the great success of the city. So I wanted to thank the council and the department heads for what they do day in and day out. I just celebrated my 40-year anniversary with the city on September 1st. Bill Lamb, thank you. Bill Lamb was gracious enough to hire me as a police officer. And I started September 1st. And I've been here ever since, except that little break to do the campaign. And I also want to mention before we continue, thanks to Miles and Jared for the outstanding presentation. And Sherry puts together the annual report, which I use as kind of the guide to go from here. So the civil service office, I'm not, with the whole presentation, I'm not going to read what's on the screen for you there unless it's something that needs more clarification. But the civil service office is another collaboration between the schools and the city. In addition to what you see on the screen there, Lorene takes care of the random drug testing, as well as CDL drug tests for all the licensed staff, driver's licensed staff, CDL licensed staff in the city. She also maintains with the hospital, the wellness program and requirements for those to see whether or not they get the discount for taking part in the wellness. And we have about 80% of our staff that take part in the wellness initiative, which is pretty high in comparison to some of the other people doing a voluntary wellness program. And then lastly, Lorene certifies the city payroll bi-weekly for us. The community development department is comprised of the three departments you see listed there. The advantage of that is cross-training and staff sharing, so that if somebody's off on vacation, for example, the building clerk, one of the other clerks there can still assist. Same thing with planning and zoning, same thing with economic development. The office is always operational through lunch, and many times people will use their lunch break to come in. The community development department updated the city comprehensive plan with a great deal of community input. I know some of you were very, very involved in that. And then what I've done this year is I've shared some stories along the way, rather than wait to the end and then give you a list of stories. So what we do is have what's called a pre-development meeting, anytime somebody is going to come in with a big project, might be industrial, might be commercial. So in this case, it was the Myers. And the pre-development meeting is every department head in the city, a representative of Ohio Edison, First Energy, county sanitary engineer, or anybody else, county commissioners, anybody else that we think may need to be there, so they can come to one meeting and get all of their questions answered. And when we met with the Myers, it was about a two-hour meeting. And Chris Jones, who's the senior real estate manager for Myers, stopped me afterwards and said, "I just want you to know, I've worked in multiple states, and I've never seen anybody put together anything quite like this," and how helpful it was. The second thing he told me was, "Usually, I'm lucky if I get to meet the mayor, let alone have a mayor stay for two hours for a meeting like this." And I shared with him how important it was for this Myers project to take place, because we have been working so long to try to get something on that site, and that whatever time it took, we were committed to that. But I share that with you just to show that this is providing the best customer service model for new projects coming to town. So then with the building department, you can see both the revenues generated in 2022, these numbers are, as well as what the commercial construction investment was. And then a couple other short stories. So Nancy Nozick, who you all know from Branstad and Carroll, did both the brand-new four-story courthouse behind the Common Pleas, as well as the renovation of the 1841. And when we were here going over the plans for the municipal court moving into the 1969, she shared with me, "I just want you to know that Dan Gladish and Mark Crumley are the best she's ever worked with in problem-solving, getting things resolved through all of those projects." And then the other one was Crumble Cookies. We had the ribbon cutting there on March 10th, 2023, this year. And the owner, Nathan, was number 26 on the list to get his ovens. And we found out, this is from the corporation, they get the ovens through the corporation, we found out that if they could get a temporary occupancy permit issued, which Dan Gladish and Mark Crumley were able to accomplish for them, they moved from number 26 to number 3 and opened six weeks sooner than they had expected to, which again helped start the revenue stream coming in for them, and they were most appreciative of that. And then last but not least, July, just July of this year, we had a partial roof collapse at the carl outbreak in friction on one of the older parts of the building, not the building that was built most recently. And there is a gentleman here from DPS Roofing registering to do that roof there. And I just happened to be walking by, and he stopped me, and he said, "I want you to know that we do business in many, many communities, and by far, your staff here are the most professional and helpful." Economic development, we do the ribbon cuttings, as you can see there, with the city, county, state officials, as well as liaisons from our federal government. The North Court widening project cost roughly $21 million. But what I wanted to share with you, the city had a portion of that because we added the center islands, the decorative lights, and the multimodal path. But the investments now, including the proposed $20 million for Myers, are around $52 million, so more than double what that street construction costs. And then if you compare that with what the city did with the industrial growth, the city invested $14 million in redoing all of the industrial roads. And the private sector, the industry itself, from 2011 to date, has invested $282 million in our industry. And what that tells me is if the city invests, investments from the private and commercial sectors will happen as well. And that's what makes Medina so special. With planning and zoning, we finalized our comprehensive plan that council passed last September. And again, I'd like to thank Andrew Dutton for his amount of work on that and the vast amount of community involvement. We had a lot of participation with that, and it shows in the plan that was adopted. The community development block grants help fund public transit, code enforcement, the Let's Make a Difference program, and fair housing. And then our community housing impact and preservation, or CHIP grants, we do collaboratively with Brunswick. And by doing it collaboratively with Brunswick, instead of each of us getting $300,000 apiece, we get $50,000 extra apiece, which is $100,000 more for the whole community. And the reason the state is giving us that benefit is because they're only having to pay for the administration of one city, and we handle that for both the city of Brunswick and for Medina City. And currently, the multi-use path plan is being conducted by Envision in collaboration with Medina County Parks, and a great deal of citizen and business input. And I know a number of you have been involved in that as well. With our engineering department, the construction projects in 2021 are listed on your screen there. I promised you I wasn't going to read those. We tried to couple those dollars with grant dollars to spread our local dollars further. The design and planning for 2023, 2024 looks to be probably in excess of $14 million. And then if we go to this video here that you're seeing now, this is the West Smith Road paving project. It's really pretty interesting, and I'm thankful that Miles was able to capture this on drone. So there you can see the machine with the cement trucks backing up, and we were doing from Champion Creek to Baxter Street. And there were 96 trucks lined up in a row to back up to that machine, and they had to be emptied within 90 minutes. And as you see that machine rolling and the concrete being added to it, it's solid road, curbs, and the whole travel lane all at once. And it was pretty neat to see it work there. We also coordinated with Fetchco to have the west side of the project done. This is them pouring it here, as well as east side passable, so that we could open it up for Fair Week and several days before and after Fair Week. And then the next video shows the railroad that was just refinished over at AI Route. And we've had some questions with the incident in Palestine, Ohio. And fortunately for us, the railroad cars pass very slowly through the city of Medina. They're not going 40, 50 mile an hour or greater. And as a result of that, then if there would be something happen, it's not at high speeds where multiple cars are jumping off the tracks. We do have a complaint now of speed as a result of fixing that rail line, because now the trucks aren't slowing down like they used to. So I'm working with Brad Root. He may have an interest in purchasing his own speed monitoring device there to kind of draw the attention to the trucks. The fire department, I'm very proud of the collaboration with police and LST. You can see who we service there. We're staffing currently at seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to midnight. They're very involved in community and public relations. As the council is well aware, we've improved the training and equipment, most recently the self-contained breathing apparatus for them, to make sure that it's functional and safe. The department also does first aid, CPR, basic life support, and fire extinguishers, fire extinguisher trainings for the public as well, as part of the safety program. And our fire department, on a number of occasions, have helped pull young ducklings or geese that fell into storm grates, as did Nino and Cindy helped with a group of ducklings that were kind of stuck in City Hall and the parking deck there and couldn't find their way back to their mother. The other thing I wanted to mention with the fire department is through the Medina County Emergency Management Agency, there are regular tabletops and field exercises on dealing with hazmat situations, such as they dealt with the train derailment. And really, what was a saving grace for us was when we had the fairgrounds explosion with the tractors, weeks before that, we had just practiced an exercise where a weather event had come through and toppled some of the rides and so forth. So not quite the same with the fairgrounds explosion, but the result was the same with scores and scores of injuries and people that needed lifeflighted. And that ongoing training from EMA works for us day in and day out to keep us prepared for these things. The law department, you can see the staffing levels there and what their scope of handling cases is. The law director also handles the numerous civil and legal matters of the city. On my behalf, he reviews every single contract that comes into the city, just because I'm not comfortable until he's comfortable with it. And Greg was very instrumental, as was Mike Lyons from the county prosecutor's office, and Chris Jacob in the lease for the 1969 courthouse for municipal court operations that council approved on August 28th. And as the council is well aware, we've been working on this for about two decades. And this is a good resolve for them, but it's also a way to share the Sally Port, the security entrance, and the staffing costs. And the result of that is it saves county tax dollars by us sharing and saves us tax dollars from not having to duplicate the same thing a block and a half or two blocks away. Excuse me. The Medina Community Rec Center, the building itself is 20 years old. We have a video here of the fitness room expansion in process there. First, the concrete floor. And as the video continues, you will see the outer walls and windows in place. And the city collaborated with Medina City Schools a number of years ago to raise the capital improvement fund from $100,000 to $150,000, because we know there's going to be more and more needs as the building ages. We're replacing aged equipment inside. The rec center is partnering with the parks for a trailer for the Party in the Park series and other community events. And I just want to thank Jansen, who took over the oversight of the rec center and is doing an outstanding job with it, and we appreciate his efforts with that. With Medina TV, again, I want to thank Miles and Jared for their help with the State of the City slides and presentations. They've been providing video services for 27 years. They also partnered with Main Street and the commissioners to bring in some outside revenue. But the other thing they do is every time we have those ribbon cuttings on one Friday a month, they provide all of the video on a disc to the business, that then they can use it for marketing and promotional, as well as Barbara provides them all the still photos. The future may become a communications department for the city, so that we can have some consistency in the information shared and distributed and how we do those things. That's John's debut there. Medina TV uses, currently uses Facebook and YouTube, in addition to the video that's on Armstrong. But they're also researching software now to expand that to Apple TV, Roku, and Firestick, so that those that have moved away from Armstrong but are using one of these other devices can still do that. And not necessarily related to Medina TV, but I needed to fit it in. Barbara does the city newsletter for us, and we're up to about 2,500 subscribers every week that gets information on the city and helps us spread the information. The parks department is comprised of those three divisions. Again, efficiencies, we have one part-time parks clerk who can also fill in for cemetery lots, for calls about problem trees with the forestry. And what that permits us to do is keep the staff out in the field as much as possible. Again, that's the more effective and efficient customer service model. And the other thing I wanted to mention with the parks department, and I didn't hear this during the vocation talks at my high school, but we have a remote control raceway over at Reagan Park, and we have multiple frisbee golf courses. And people that have come through both of ours in the city are now professional remote control racers or professional frisbee golf players and get paid for it. Professional. So I just found that interesting. Again, another piece of information that Miles was able to dig up for me. Parks department, the Rocky River, you can see the work we're doing there, and thankful for MTD for continuing to help us mow. The sports associations also assist with upkeep of different fields, depending on the association. This video here is a parking lot extension in the new Dog Park, both at Ray Mellert Park. And I wanted to mention that that was funded in part by capital grant dollars from the state of Ohio, with the help of Representative Sharon Ray and Senator Mark Romanchuk. We're finalizing plans to bid the skate park upgrade and hope to have that done here, if not later this year, by next spring. And I also would like to mention the Willard Stevenson and Lincoln Foundations, because both help support improvements to the Miracle League baseball field, and it was much appreciated. Some of you may recall, it used to be that if you were in a wheelchair or a walker, you could only be on the infield. You couldn't play the outfield. And now with the help of these foundations, it's a hard enough surface that those individuals can play every position on the field, which is important to them and important for us as a city. The forestry department handles the tree pruning, as you can see there. And we were awarded our 41st Tree City USA. I wanted to highlight this video for you here. You can see, if you look well below the bucket there, that's the power lines. This is the 200 block of North Elmwood, the Brooks section, just south of West North. In fact, you're going to see the house on the lower right there here shortly, that was redone there at the southwest corner of West North. But that kind of gives you some concept of the size of some of our trees and some of the challenges that these folks have to go through, staying away from the power lines, staying away from the lines running from the poles to the houses. And I don't like heights, so that would not be for me. We work annually with the local Qantas for the Arbor Day Tree giveaway to students. And I also wanted to mention the forestry and streets. Every time we have one of these storms, you know, the 100-year storms, we get like every two or three weeks, we dedicate all of our forestry folks and all of our street folks to go out there and work with the residents, get it out to the curb, get it ready, and then send the chipper truck along to either cut it up if it's too big to go in the chipper or chip it up if it's not, and try to get the city back in the best shape we can as quickly as we can. That talks about the cemetery now. We talk about the two cemeteries that we're responsible for. And I'd like to mention the Friends of the Cemetery, who continue to donate to the city and currently are in excess of about $2.4 million in projects over the years, as well as mentioning they were able to have us achieve Level 2 accreditation by ArbNet Arboretum. And without their work on that, that would not have happened. We're working on a new computer program now to permit people to search for internments that will lead them directly to where their loved one or the person they're coming to visit is. As you heard in Finance today, there's a plan, plans are ready for the third columbarium wall, because the second one is filling up pretty quickly. And I wanted to mention the Independent Order of the Odd Fellows, Morning Star Lodge 26. They care for the baby section of the Spring Grove Cemetery. And we had a public properties meeting over there several weeks ago, and it is just immaculate, the flower beds and the care and the upkeep of that cemetery. Excuse me. The police department, we work both in the city and Lafayette Township, collaborate with the other safety forces. I did want to mention, I know the council's aware of it, because she was recognized at a city council meeting, but Officer Lauren Brooks responded to a woman in labor well before the medics got there, no disrespect, she just got there sooner, and actually ended up delivering the baby before the LST units were on scene. And that's the importance of us having officers get there quickly. Somebody's heart's not beating, they're bleeding to death, or in this case, the baby's not waiting for the LST unit, the officers can surely assist with that. This video here is our police officers pulling a deer from an above-ground pool. If you watch it long enough, the deer has a little bit of trouble at first, but then eventually does scamper, once they get them untangled, and it kind of gets its bearings back together. Technology use, we have body cameras for each of our officers. We were one of the first in the state. We have car cameras. And the other thing our police department does regularly is use the cameras that are in the community. You'd be surprised at how many doorbell cameras there are, or business cameras. So when we're trying to identify suspects or identify a suspect vehicle, those other cameras are very helpful for us. And then last is the aerial vehicle program, or our drones. That's Detective Jeff Smith on the ground, and Miles using his drone to videotape the PD drone, so you all could see it. But the drones are very helpful. I know I've shared in prior State of the Cities, finding fire hotspots, and that's why the fire department just recently put in a request to purchase some drones as well. They're helpful in missing persons, be it children or elderly folks that have wandered away, and also helpful with fleeing suspects. Then I also wanted to highlight something for you. On January 4th of this year, I was on my way into work, and I heard that Sergeant Sloan from the PD had stopped a vehicle with three Spanish-speaking males from Guatemala. And they were having trouble with the other departments, trying to find somebody that was bilingual enough to help them communicate with them. So I radioed to dispatch to see if Miles was available, because Miles can speak many languages, including Spanish. And Miles was able to respond to the scene, interact between the police and the subjects he stopped. And he was impressed with the respect and dignity that the officers spoke to the males. And the males, through Miles, were equally as impressed, because in Guatemala, that's not how their interaction with police officers generally goes. So again, just something else that's out of the normal and I thought you should know about. Our service department is comprised of those four divisions. Nino does an excellent job of staffing between the four divisions and meeting ever-changing demands. And I know I've shared with the council before, but for the public, having a common union with all of the four service divisions, as well as parks, cemetery, and forestry, lets us move staff and adjust staff between departments as needs and priorities arise. And, you know, sometimes we could use twice the staffing in this department or that department, and then the next week, it could shift to somebody else. And having a common union lets us use those people as effectively and as efficiently as we can. And the Teamsters Union is appreciative of the city employing these people and how they're treated, and have no problem with us doing that. The sanitation department, you can see the number that was taken to the central processing facility, but diverted were 335 tons of yard waste that we collect from April to November, 1,200 tons of organic recycling, 545 tons of vegetable-based waste, and over 275 tons of commercial cardboard. All of those that normally would have been taken to the central processing facility were diverted as a result of our programs. And then an interesting story for you here, there's not a video on this, but on May 8th of this year, at 5:30 a.m., our sanitation driver went in to dump a dumpster at Center Point Plaza. And we have cameras that the driver in the truck can see the hopper that he's dumping into. Well, he sees movement in that hopper right after he dumped this dumpster. And here, somebody was in that dumpster looking for their keys and phone. So the person, before we could identify him, jumped out and took off. And later, when they dumped the contents, they were able to find the phone. And again, Miles assisted us with locating the owner through his phone contacts, and we were able to get the phone back to him. Never did find the keys, but we found the phone. And then just another interesting story from one of our employees. He's getting ready to retire. His name's Tony Hall. His name's Tony Hall and he's worked in the sanitation department. And he stopped in to see me and he said, you know, I just want to share this with you. He said, "I started here 33 years ago and I told my wife I'm going to work with the city until something better comes along." And he said, "I just want to tell you what a great place it's been." And he said, "I've enjoyed those 33 years." So that makes me feel good to hear what our employees are thinking about their employ here with the city as well. Streets Department, as you know, they take care of the snow plowing and pavement treating, clean out our catch basins for us, rebuild them if they're necessary. We replace them with bike-friendly, but only if the grate itself needs replaced because they're pretty expensive. So just to replace them, to replace them, we generally don't do, but we do anytime they need to be replaced. We put the ones in with the splatted tops to make it safer for our bikers. Our annual leaf program last year, which the Street Department does for us, we did 319 loads. That's in comparison to 242 in 2021. Dead deer pickups have been escalating. In 2020, we did 29. In 2021, we did 55. And last year, we did 86. And then in addition to just deer, all total dead animal pickups last year, 2022, was 125. And the Streets Department also hangs all of the American flags for us in the city. The Vehicle Maintenance Department, excuse me, Vehicle Maintenance Department takes care of the licensed vehicle in the city. Each department is charged for parts and labor to fund the department. It's more efficient and effective for us rather than contracting out because if we have a police car there or a fire truck there, we can prioritize that unless something else is of a higher priority, like in the summertime, a mower for the parks. But what I wanted to show you on this next video is this is the city competition pool and to the bottom right corner there, you'll see what looks like a big shelf. And that is a bulk, it's called a bulkhead. I didn't know what a bulkhead was. That's a bulkhead and when the water's in there, it can be moved and adjust the length of the pool. But we drain the pool and didn't think about having to move that bulkhead. So the people from our Vehicle Maintenance Department in collaboration with the city maintenance folks come up with an idea to build a wooden frame with rollers to go underneath the two corners along the gutter lines, which let them move, that thing weighs over a ton, let them move it from side to side. Still took quite a few people to push it because you're pushing a ton on rollers, but nonetheless, it just shows you, just shows you the ingenuity of our staff and I appreciate that. Our Water Department obviously changes out the water meters. Our water breaks increased in 2022 versus 2021. We recently upgraded the data command from radio frequency to cell service so they can get that on their phones and that can tell them then, you know, are the towers dropping? And if they are dropping, what is the zone that that tower fills so we can try to figure out where the water break is? As you know, one time we had one by the Rocky River on 18 and this last one we had was the Rocky River right at Granger Road there. And when it's broken and feeding into the river, it's much more difficult to try to locate and isolate. The Water Department flushed 1,500 of the 17 hydrants in the city. We prefer that they do it because they know the process of opening and pretty, opening and closing them pretty easily or slowly so that it doesn't jam the system and cause additional water breaks that they're going to have to work on. The water staff are also responsible for all the water line locates for the three utility companies that have been running fiber through our city for the last several years. The Medina Municipal Airport, I wanted to thank Earl Olson and Flight Services for their many years of airport operation for the city. As the council's aware, we're in the process of transitioning to a new operating management team. We are working with the FAA to revise our master plan, expand the property further to the east, the Tots Farm. This will provide more space for hangars and maintenance and our hope is to also, at some point in the future, not in the next few years, but some point in the future, to lengthen the runway to permit small jet takeoffs and landings, which would have a very positive impact on our fuel sales. And this airport is a feeder for Akron Canton and Cleveland Hopkins Airport and all of these things, more maintenance, more hangars, more fuel sales will make the airport just that much more self-sufficient. Our community partners, I mentioned a little bit earlier, the community, the Quanis, they do 50th anniversary luncheon for those celebrating 50 years of marriage, student Christmas shopping, flowers, mulch for the jump playground with the K kids, the Medina County Sports Hall of Fame and the National Arbor Day. Just this morning, I was at the Rotary for a service at 10 a.m. for the 9/11 memorial on North Huntington next to the fire station and they help us maintain and upkeep that. The Lions Club donates food to Cups Cafe Pantry. As the council is well aware, we have probably four pages, maybe a little bit more now, of collaborations between the city and Medina City Schools, the last of which was concrete repair of the AI Route driveway as well as converting two tennis courts to six pickleball courts. We do a great deal of collaboration with Medina Chamber and Main Street, the Medina County Commissioners. For our seniors, we have two different Love Medina events, one in the spring with Grace Church of Medina and one in the fall by St. Francis. They also have a three-day Unity Festival, lunch for our local and surrounding Police Department members, Martin Luther King Jr. and Black History Month events, Veterans Day concert, and the Community Alliance Project, which just had an event here two weeks ago, August 28th, over at Mellert Park, where they invite the families in the neighborhood there and provide them food and games and activities. And the council has also funded recently the SPCA and the Medina Miafix to assist us with the animal care in the city. In addition to all of those, we have citizens that serve on volunteer groups and boards and many of our commissions. Excuse me. So something special about Medina, I guess a few things. We received a call in January, I believe it was relayed by Councilwoman Hazel Time, that there was some flooding being caused because the landscapers for Liberty Woods decided to take the grate off the pipe, which then eventually filled up with logs and leaves and debris and then started to flood the area. So the city crew went over there, determined what was going on and were able to get the drainage pipe cleared out, get the grate back in shape, and then pump the water that was was out and still present, then into the, then now replace grate and let it get back to the normal. On June 7th of this year, as you know, we've been working on that West Smith Road construction and we were having a great deal of dust in the 100 block and partially into the 200 block. And when we were getting ready to start the paving at the west end, Nino was able to determine with Fetschko, the contractor, that they didn't expect, at least for the next few months, to do any more work in that 1 and 200 blocks. So we cold patched those trenches that just kept kicking the gravel out and kicking the gravel out and as a result of that, it was a much safer travel for the fare. Then June 22nd of this year, we had a small dog hit and killed. The owner was on vacation. Nino reached out to the owner. Obviously, he couldn't come get the dog himself. He had to make arrangements for somebody to come and pick it up on his behalf, being out of the area. So Nino had his staff pack the deceased dog on ice and then hold it for the pickup of the friend or relative of the owner. I also wanted to again mention the collaborative effort with Medina County Commissioners for the city to lease the 1969 courthouse, which will be a benefit for our community and the municipal court region for many years to come. The Finance Department, I'm proud that the city, and I know the council is, has one of the lowest income tax rates in the state with a 1.25. When I started, we were generating about $12 million a year. In 2022, you can see it increased to about 17 and a half and this year, 2023, if it stays on the same pace, we're expecting closer to 20 million in increased revenue. And that helps us with the city operations and when I talk to you about the investments on North Court Street and the industrial area, that's the result of jobs being created, those financial investments. On March 3rd, '23, there was an elderly resident who talked to Jenny from Finance and didn't think she's going to be able to make it in to pay physically, couldn't come in to make her payment on her utility bill. So Jenny asked her, "Well, why don't you just park in the garage? I'll come out there, meet you, take your payment, come in, run it through the system and I'll bring your receipt out to you." So that was the plan. Jenny looks out and a short time later, the woman is trying to make herself work her way around to get to the finance window. So Jenny left, went over there, assisted her to the window, processed the payment, and then assisted her back to her car. And again, that just shows me the care and compassion of the people that we have working here. And then in mid-April, Keith contacted me because we were nearing a shut-off for the month and we weren't receiving mail at all. So I was able to provide Keith with a contact for downtown Cleveland where the trucks come out of and after alerting them to it, they found that there was a truck full of Medina mail that never got dispatched out here. So as a result of making that contact, pretty soon it was sent to the Medina Mail Annex and then shortly thereafter, we started getting the payments that we should have been getting. And then the next thing I want to do is just set up a video that you're going to see. This is a ribbon cutting that we did in April of 2023 at a corporation called Gabiak on Progress Drive. So just to understand what this family has been through, in 1999, the Gabiak family immigrated to the United States from the Ukraine. In 2007, McHale Gabiak obtained his CDL. He was working other jobs before that. And he did that for about six years and then in September of 2013, they started Gabiak Corporation, which is a commercial trucking logistics company across the country, and they ran it out of a home office from September 13 until April 23, when they built this brand-new facility because they were up to 22 trucks already. And his words moved me at the ribbon cutting and they move me every time I see the video, so I'll let you watch that.
I want to also say thank you everyone for coming. My speech can be good like my kids. My English not very good enough, but anyway, first of all, I want to say thanks God for America. It was a blessing for us to be here. Yeah, like we hear old story here, my kids were already tall from the beginning and I want to thank God especially for Medina. We really like this country, this city. This was a blessing for us. And thank you everyone for coming for this beautiful day and...
Yeah, it's a great family. The sons work there, the daughter works there, the wife works there, and the son-in-laws and the daughter-in-laws, all. It's a family operation and they're doing great work. So I'd just like to thank you. That's Princess Madison there, she's going to be eight this December and Prince Aiden will be four and we're blessed to have them here in a community. And I just want to conclude by thanking you all for your support and investment in the community. This is my 14th State of the City to you. Each year, I'm further impressed and proud of how you all support and promote me, our staff, and the fine community and it's very much appreciated and God bless. Thank you.